In the Village Board at 7:31 PM. This meeting ends, oh, all trustees are here this evening. And to be able to face them all just putting their hands in the air is most impressive according to all. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your time, talent, and patience in advance. Item four, special order of business. Tonight, we are. We're lucky to have a presentation of the senior resource center's sustainability report from Sue Bronson and perhaps others. So yeah, you can come up and just remember we have that thing.
Oh, let me see. I'm just checking on the side. Okay.
Sorry.
So we'd appreciate it if you could talk right in so that you can.
Oh, you said that again.
No problem. So that microphone is kind of quiet, so you really got to talk right into this so that you can hear yourself.
Got it. All right, thank you. Used to microphones.
Oh, good.
Thank you. I'm Sue Bronson. I am the Chair of the Elder Services Advisory Board. And with Elizabeth Price, we're retiring probably from the Senior Resource Center. Within the next few years, we thought it was important to begin to look at sustainability of this for years. And I came in September and shared what our process is. So this is the next step to let you know what we did. New materials for, I had two printed copies to pass around if I get them back, if you want to take around. This is the report that we came up with. We had six focus groups. We had an online survey. And we looked at the research to develop our recommendations, and they're on page 18 to 22, if you want to skip ahead. And I'm also going to highlight four of them in a moment. Then we had an independent consultant talk to the stakeholders so we could receive some honest feedback. So the four recommendations that I want to talk about first is the creation of a Benjamin Center in the Village Center. So it came through loud and clear. Every single focus group talked about wanting this space. They called it like cheers. But we're thinking with the William Benjamin Fund, if we could create a Benjamin Center that went under him. It removes every senior that some of us younger seniors would prefer not to use. And this space could be a warm, welcoming, accessible space for people to just gather informally with peers, as well as some of the smaller programs. And the impact would be increased quality of life and a decrease in social isolation, which I'm sure you all know since COVID has become a major health concern. Second is to increase in strength and programming by moving most of the senior programming to the recreation department, who can provide more hours like evenings and weekends and intergenerational opportunities. With the shift to the rec department, it would be important to create some collaborative space. So the idea is to have offices next to one another where they develop relationships, share ideas, collaboration, talk more frequently, increase communication across departments, organizations, and hopefully increase community as well. Number three is to increase the number of portals or doorways where older adults and their caregivers can receive credible information and referrals. We recommend that a library staff member receive, or more than one, receive training as older adult information and referral specialists. And the new case, North Shore Case Manager would be another access point. So the idea is whoever you have a relationship with, whoever you're comfortable with, you can get credible information. And number four is to maintain Shorewood's reputation as a leader of an age-friendly community by integrating age-friendly goals in all departments. And we want to decrease silos and increase awareness of the needs and gifts of older adults in our community and then increase synergy across all of Shorewood. So our next steps are Katie Now and I, as leaders of Elder Services Advisory Board, would meet with the village manager to explore options. So we take it from the recommendations based on the data to something you can act on with the details involved in it and use that as a framework for a 2025 vote for initiative to be reviewed by you in June of '24 for your consideration. Any questions or comments?
I would imagine so. So this is our chance to, obviously, this is a, you know, a presentation. We're not taking action. You're talking to us about kind of what you've done and then what could happen next to operationalize some of this. Questions or comments from the trustees? I guess I'll open it up with just to thank you for leading this work and it's always good to, I know you both will be around here, but Elizabeth and Sue, you know, provided a lot of really important leadership and care with the Senior Resource Center over the years, and I really appreciate it. You run a lot for me. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, thank you very much for putting this together. This is really thorough and we're very impressive. Is kind of the idea that if a new director steps in, they can use this as a roadmap going forward and basically just, you know, we'll be able to come in and hit ground running on any day that that should be.
For day one?
Sure. But.
Map it out. I mean, I can tell you how much is in here that needs to get out on paper, but the ideas are there, but it's hard to move forward when you don't know what's okay to move forward on. It's hard to have financial impact when you don't know what's possible.
Right, right. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Do you feel like this, the Village Center here is, or the, I said Village Center over there, is a good sort of central location? Or would you be trying to identify maybe more centrally located areas? Or do you find that this is a pretty decent spot where maybe you could expand into the North Shore or into the Old North?
It's a central spot, especially with a lot of seniors living across the street. It's also handicapped accessible, which makes it really important, easy for people to get around to and is familiar. And that stability is important.
Yeah.
And I think the library allows people, I mean, don't we all go to the libraries?
Yeah.
So it's like, it's right there. And again, I'm thinking that there would be a curated corner or spot or shelf in the library. So just walking past it, caregivers as well as older adults would, oh, I see a book.
Yeah.
Or information.
A lot of opportunities to expand on what you guys already do. And, you know, I think this is such a great location. Would hate to see sort of the group move away from this area. So it's great that you're, you know, you value this space.
I'm just, I know. Thank you so much for the work on this, you know, seeing, you know, some of the comments that people made about how how critical that support was for them over the years, especially as they've been, you know, dealing with the pandemic. You know, I think we've all thought so much about how, you know, kids were impacted with schools closed and probably a lot of us haven't thought about how difficult that time period was for some of our older residents. So it's really, you know, it really makes me feel good about the work that you all are doing to support people in our community and to know that there's been this thoughtful approach to how to sustain the work and build upon it. I'm really pleased with that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for you and all the people who worked on this. It's extremely valuable. And I just had a question about what it looks to me that you see here, the staffing level staying the same going forward.
Slightly different. So there would be a Director of the Benjamin Center. And where they're not doing programming, they would be doing what I'm going to call pop-up socialization. So the luncheons, meetings somewhere, some more of that sort of thing, as well as taking over some of what Shorewood connects, which is currently a contracted position that would end at December of '25. So taking over some of that responsibility as well. And then we would not have the program.
Assistant.
Assistant, program assistant. And instead, the rec department would be doing that. So how, is it just a shift or is it different? I don't know.
So you're going from how, what's your, your, what's your FTE right now and what would it be?
Right now, we're at 1.5.
Just repeating the line. It's 1.5.
1.45. And it would be going down to 0.9.
Going down to 0.9.
So I guess I love to see the collaboration and the breaking down of silos. That seems so efficient and just a good way to work as a small community. Without knowing how those other organizations, what kind of commitment they can make.
Yes.
When Chief Whitaker came forward with the North Shore Case Manager, I remember thinking the next day, wow, we already have Senior Resource Center. We're the only one on the North Shore that does. Now we'd be, also, our taxpayers are supporting the caseworker at North Shore. We already have people doing something not exactly the same, but similar. But for the residents paying taxes, you know, is that the why? Is this, do we get to break on the North Shore cost, right? My other question is, having just looked at my North Shore, I'm sorry, Shorewood Rec Department, summer catalog, I saw a month class for the elderly that I think I do. Right. And I've talked to Jordy Brooks about this and he's very open. But I see this as a real issue there. And so, you know, his rec department indicated they would be willing to have someone do 225 FTE for elderly has, what are we hearing from, I'm just wondering, when it comes down to buy in here? I think your ideas about collaboration are wonderful. But it's hard for me to support something when I don't know what they're going to really come through with.
Sure. So that was part of the independent consultant getting feedbacks. Let's say the rec department is very excited. And part of this transition is that leading, let's just say, an exercise class for seniors is not the same as doing a Zumba class for 20-year-olds. Our bodies are different. They need different things. And somebody has to be aware of how to make adjustments for this individual. Not all old people are like this, but this individual has these needs. So part of the transition is to teach people about the needs of older bodies. And I think about that as, let's say, the rec department has some college students. Then they go off because they're college students and they move on, but then we get to teach more people about older bodies and the needs of older citizens. So I think of it as a really good thing that we keep educating more and more people and spreading the spreading the knowledge and the awareness of it. And I heard from the older residents that one, like exercise classes and some things they want specifically for them. You know, our peer group, our bodies, our stuff, but other things, like they're dying for intergenerational stuff. One of the things they loved about tech support is it's a young person that they get to talk to. When they get to do things with people of different ages, it gives them more energy. And it's also both ways, not just one way.
I guess my final concern, besides the allotment of staff time at the rec department, you mentioned a librarian.
So the librarian would not be a new position. It would be an additional training that they would get, one or more, depends. The library said that people are eager to get more training, and this would be a certificate that they would get.
Okay. The other concern I have is when I talked about increasing activities, physical activities, classes for the elderly with Mr. Brooks expressed a concern about space.
Right.
And so I don't know, you know, that bothers me a little bit because apparently the one room where there were a lot of people that used to do, like you had to sign up for the Senior Strength, Flexibility, and Balance class. You had to be on it the day that it opened because it would fill up. There'd be a waitlist. It was fabulous. It developed your community. The teacher retired. It has not been replaced in. I mean, I saw one today that could maybe be close, but I guess I'm concerned that, you know, they're doing personal training over there and there's a revenue piece there that they're not getting when everybody signs up for the one class. And I'm just wondering, when you talk about Benjamin Center, does this include an exercise? If you wanted to have movement classes organized by the rec department, where would they be? If the rec department says, oh, we don't have any space.
Got it. So can I be in my dream world for a moment? So imagine that, but it's now Elizabeth's very tight office and the conference room next door to it, the Spectre Room, knock the wall out in between. Now you have a large enough space that, I'm going to make it up. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 9:00 to noon is pure social time. The other days of the weekend, they afternoon could be programs that are smaller. So let's say it's a program with six, 10, 12 people that can fit in there. And the large room could be used for the large exercise class. So we'd allow that extra space that the rec department is missing. And instead of the large room for a program that is only six people, they're in that warm, cozy Benjamin Center.
So then where would the, where would the director?
Oh, thank you. You're not in my dream. I'd like to dream, babe. So then the Health Department space, those rooms in the back. So imagine that the Benjamin Center Director could have a private room because they do need for information and referral, need to talk to people privately about conservative health information, et cetera. And then, but some of those rooms are big. They could have two, even three rec department part-time staff in there. And they're learning from that Benjamin Center Director, meeting each other all the time. And then that conference room as a part of the Health Department would then become public space for, again, I'll say, medium-sized groups.
And tell me just from your, and I apologize if it was in your report and I didn't see it. What's your take on how, what the Senior Resource Center in Shorewood does? How will that fit in with this new North Shore Case Manager?
So one, I think that the North Shore Case Manager is going to be this. And I think they are, let me see. They may make an initial contact. They are like, I don't know enough. So I have to say that first of all. I don't know enough.
It's new. I mean, I think you even started here.
Right. I have a social work. I know what social workers do. So you make that initial contact to build the relationship. You know about resources in the town, but they're not the ongoing person. So I want to just commend Elizabeth. Think about it as, how often do you want to ask for help versus come and just say hi? And Elizabeth kind of notices things and then asks about them and follows up with them in a private phone call or checks off on it later. So I think about it as different people need different relationships and need different handholding or checking in or whatever.
And also, no, the case manager can only be accessed through 911 EMT response. So it would never replace a person like Elizabeth Price. And it's really geared towards frequent frequent use of EMT in place of other supports or proactive or medication management, for example, or something like that. So.
So basically, no, no impact on your department.
I would not say no impact. I think it's an important collaboration again. Somebody with a different mindset that comes in, different relationship, talk with one another, carries like one identifies, the other carries it forward. Or, oh, did you know that that person is related to that person or is a neighbor to that person who might be able to help? So it's about knowing the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do think the model in cultivating our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, which will be in front of us in the near future, it definitely is looking at all of this work as not one person's job, but everybody's job. And so I do think that this model makes a lot of sense and it's going to be synergistic with that. And I think that our annual initiatives process will, it won't be able to go as fast as everybody wants it, but it will find a home. And, you know, that's how we can take on new things.
Yes. I also want to say that my term, I have to get off the Elder Services Advisory Board this spring. I term out, but Katie has worked on this report and is a likely leader going forward.
Great. That's reassuring.
Thank you for the time.
Trustee Morvalda.
There, I was just going to say, there is a regimen motion.
Oh.
I apologize. So I think we are agenda. I bet. And I'd be happy to make it. We're ready for it. I'm going to interact with the Village Manager to work with ESAB President Bronson, develop the frameworks for a 2025 Village Forum Initiative for the North City Generation in 2024.
Sorry.
Great. Anything further? We have a moment to make a trustee Morvalda, second to make a trustee Kudo. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to confirm then at that point, you'd be, we'd have some numbers to work with for the budget process for 2025. For 2026. Because we'll be doing the budget this year for '25.
Right. Coming back this summer.
June.
Yeah, June of '24.
June of '24. Okay.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good catch, Monetai. All right. So moving on to the consent agenda. Item five. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Don't move. A second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Trustee Morvalda, second by Trustee Purchasing. Any discussion? Trustee Kudo?
I agree by B G.
By G.
Please.
All right. All of in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of Biden E, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, items removed from the consent agenda. That would be Biden E, consider approval of services agreement of link from Lifeguard Services LLC to provide services at Outnumbered Beach for 2024, when this was deferred from our last meeting. And it's back before us with some changes. Trustee Kudo?
Yeah, I was just going to give a quick update. Having a conversation with the LLC as well as Assistant Village Manager Anderson. While I was thinking with both of them, we had a big conversation about the times of days to beach active and the number of employees that are in the picture safe. I'm hopeful in the future we'll be able to make additional changes. From my perspective, we had a lot of staff earlier in the day when we had less people going to the beach and sort of working its way down late until later in the day. The beach is usually pretty busy. So we moved it from closing at four, or our service ended at four from LLC, to ending at five. Hopefully next year we can move it to six because that's when the beach is going to be busiest, you know, mid-afternoon. And unfortunately, that's when the droppings, premier dummies happened in the past. So it's a good move in the right direction, I think. Just wanted to give some updates. We all didn't, we got pulled this for a reason, but I think there's enough of this.
I just want to say thank you for doing that.
Can I just, so in your conversations, did they give you an idea of like, it's just kind of the timing sort of thing on their behalf? Like they have lives, they want to do other things in the later half of the day? Or what was the reason behind the hours that they have?
I think it's just when they started.
It's historical. I can, I can speak to that. Historically, sorry, I didn't mean in.
No, it's, you're right. That's sort of where they started. So going back to St. Paul's Nancy was still ending at beach 20 years ago, whatever. They've always closed generally. But you know, based on conversations we've had, then it folks pay up around one and it closes until later in the day for whatever reason. And so starting at 10, reserving at 11, and ending at four doesn't make a lot of sense. So we were able to readjust it and I think that we can continue to sort of move the trajectory of when we have like Thursday and Thursday times, when we have there. I think that makes a ton of sense. But for this year, I'm comfortable with the additional hour.
And there's no like pushback on my behalf?
No, none at all. So it was, it was a good conversation. She was very helpful, sort of walked us through everything. And Chris has some, Assistant Village Manager Anderson had some great questions. Well, that's just where we end up. So, yeah.
Okay.
So it looks like the numbers are the same financially, but the times change in that we're shifting from an 11 to four to a noon to five, basically, Monday through Friday? And differently on the weekends or no?
There should be no changes to the, any of the fiscal items. It's just moving the hours.
Shifting it more from a
Morning.
11 to five instead of a 10.
Yeah.
No, it's 11.
But it's worse, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. I guess the thing that, if I were a parent and I was just thinking quickly in my head, okay, I know there's lifeguards every day there from 11 to four. That would be my thing I would think about. And now I can just think it's 11 to five, right? So it's very simple for a parent. Like I don't need to go and see what hours the lifeguards are today. It's basically 11 to five, 7:00.
It should be pretty normal.
And I guess that's the most important thing I would want to, you know, do through some, something, maybe the scroll on the Village website. Do lifeguard hours change? We're adding an extra hour until 5:00. As a parent, I think that would be valuable.
Yeah, I can talk to Assistant Village Manager Anderson. I can talk to Assistant Village Manager Anderson. And make sure that there's signage. Now, sure, they'll have signage describing what the new hours are, what the adjusted hours are. But certainly, there's something you can put on the websites.
Because I don't see if that's ever close to a beach. It's just a point of information, you know, if you're going to. You just look down and see if there's one. But I think, you know, for parents especially, that's really valuable information to know that we're extending that service at the same cost.
Isn't it just?
We're adjusting.
Yeah. Not an extra hour. It's 12 to five instead of 11 to four.
I would do is sliding back for a screen.
Yes.
But pointing, I would agree with you. There's nothing.
And I think that's helpful too for, this is the, I, you know, obviously worry about everybody, but I especially worry about the kids who are going. The kids who are going without parents, you know, like the probably like middle school age to me feels the most vulnerable. Cause like they're not necessarily there with mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, whoever. They feel like they're, you know. They've been strong and, you know, might be going by themselves. I know, um, my kids were that age. I, I didn't want them to be by themselves. And even now with a ninth grader, I'm like, well, we can go up the lifeguards there. Uh, so I think just being observant this summer about. When the most traffic is there, kind of like what the age breakdown will be helpful for deciding about possibly extending our hours in the future. I think in many hours as we can afford to have lifeguard there better.
Yeah, there's an opportunity here. Put it on the websites. There's. But, you know, there are plenty of opportunities for us to describe new offers. And, you know, take those and I'm happy to work behind scenes and what happens.
Shouldn't the chief whatever know?
We will let everybody know. Everybody gets it.
Postcards?
They're not that expensive.
I would like to move.
Yeah. Second. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, we are moving on. Um, we have no public carries this evening. Um, are there any citizens to be heard? I, we have no one in person looking for online. If there is anyone, um, joining us virtually who would like to be heard, um, please raise your hand or come on mute. Okay, announcing any activities. So we will move on to new business. Nine A, consider waiver purchasing policy. An agreement for additional C C phase three lake drive sewer design. Um, this comes to us from director Rochelick. Is there anything, any additional information from, uh, that was not included in the memo? Or are materials on this item? Director Rochelick?
No, there is not.
Okay. Um, there's something in what we found, but we heard you say no, there's not. Okay, so there's nothing missing from our memo. So I'm assuming that everybody has reviewed that. Are there any questions or is there a motion? Trustee Stokran.
It would appear then that when the initial planning was done for Lake Drive reconstruction, that they thought that this nine hundred feet would be okay as is.
That's what it.
And that's, now we decided it should be changed. Right?
That's correct. We, we did our preliminary review. Did not show what I would call catastrophic failures. Um, we did more refined reviews. Pulled out, um, older televising tapes and actually also asked Strand to review all of the available information. Um, and based on the subsequent reviews and a, a, um, critical risk infrastructure analysis. And we, we believe that it's prudent to replace this additional sewer, particularly given its location. As you may recall, uh, Lake Drive is going to be reconstructed in concrete. Um, and. We believe it is the, um, it is a wise choice and certainly the, a, a good investment of infrastructure dollars. Um, to update the, the sewer infrastructure within and adjacent to the Capital Drive intersection. Uh, simply because of its location, the volume of traffic it carries, um, and the relative condition of that infrastructure. Uh, we, we believe while the roadway is open now is definitely the time, um, to address this aging pipe.
I agree. Is there any other section of Lake Drive? It's combined, right? Is there any other section we are not doing? And if so, why not?
Um, we are doing no pipe replacement north of Capital Drive. Um, and that is because the, the analysis of, of that infrastructure shows that it is in good condition. Um, at some point in the future, we will likely be looking at, um, a lining of that pipe. Um, but I would say even that is, um, over a decade away.
And can we bond? I know we're going to bond for the extra three hundred. Is this the one where we have the thirteen thousand, the engineering services? Do we bond for that or do we throw this into the bonding for the three hundred? Right, thank you. Uh, may I ask, like, so what's the, this part that we're going to go after now, relatedly, but certainly? When was this put in and we're not going all the way north with it because ten more years? I mean, I'm just saying as someone in the neighborhood. Is it significantly in a lot better shape?
I would say that the, the pipe north of Capital Drive is significantly in better shape. Yes. So when I said ten years, I'm, I'm not saying it has ten years of life. I'm saying perhaps in ten years, we might start looking at the lining of that pipe. Um, typically a lining. Um, if you're doing it for condition purposes, um, will, will buy you another fifty to seventy years of service on that pipe.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Kudo?
I'd like to make a motion.
Certainly.
I moved to waive the purchasing policy and approve a professional services agreement with Kapur in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty seven dollars and eighty seven cents for engineering services. Related to additional combined sewer replacement in the southeast area combined sewer improvements phase three project.
Second.
Any further discussion? Trustee Stokran?
I guess the question then is if we decide to go ahead with this, why we can't go out for bids? Is it, what's the time sensitivity? I, so it said that it's most efficient and cost effective to have Kapur do it. Without knowing what a lower bid would come in at, how do we know?
There's a couple reasons. Um, one is that, as mentioned in the memo, um, Kapur is the state's engineer. They are ultimately responsible for, um, creating the bid documents. Their engineers create them and their engineers stamp them. Um, if the village were to do, um, hire a different engineer, um, that engineer would have to create the plans. And the drawings and provide them to Kapur and Kapur would then incorporate them in the official bidding documents. The official plans, review them and have their engineer stamp those drawings. So you're, you're, you're doing tasks there twice. Um, we also simply don't have the time. Um, the final plans are due to the state in, I believe it's May first. Um, we wouldn't have time to R F P this additional work. And I doubt very much, given the, the cost that we have here, um, that. If we were to R F P it and have bring a new, um, a new engineering firm in, it would not be less than this amount.
Okay, because our bid, the policy is ten thousand and this is thirteen, so, right?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I, thank you, Leanne. Uh, item nine B, review of alternative funding options for EPA lead copper rule implementation. This is, uh, it is a review, um, coming to us for time purposes. And we are being asked for direction, um, at the, as a result of this, um, agenda item. So this comes to us from, um, manager Ewald. Um, is there anything that you'd like to add? There were some questions and answers submitted via email that can be attached to the minutes. So hoping everybody saw those for clarification. Um, are there any questions? Or anything that you'd like to say to open this up, manager Ewald?
Just that. Before you is really, I tried to be as succinct as I possibly could. Each of these programs has a lot of, um, different components to it. But really what we're talking about is interest rates, um, and being as competitive as we can be for, um, obtaining, at least in the case of one. Availability to access the lowest interest rate we may be able to consider. I anticipate that future village boards and staff well beyond us will be reviewing the same type of documentation and implementation. Um, guidance because this project's gonna last, um, for many years. But this is what we have to start with. On a positive note, Congresswoman Moore did, um, put in an applicant or submission of funding, um, for our community. Assist with L S L and, um, just last week we found out that that was finally approved. So. I'm positive there and more news to come. But at this time, I'm happy to answer any additional questions. That presented themselves based upon the memo in front of you.
Yes, trustee Stokran.
So is the one million for Shorewood in this community funding project? That'd be out of our forty million total. Be put towards that forty million rest of.
Correct.
And we think we could get this house. So is this like the first piece we could use to say, okay, we've got a million dollars from the federal government? This is how we can, you know, like, are we staging as all these programs, you know, these federal pieces of legislation occur? Are we like saying, okay, we know we've got this one in the bag, so we know we can propose to X number of residents. Are we gonna do this? I mean, I just, I'm wondering about. With all these moving parts. And not knowing what's gonna happen in November. Like we know in Shorewood, we want to replace our lead laterals as soon as possible. But if things. If something happens where a focus changes. Where do we go then? I just, I wanna know, I wanna know what, how much money I have, which I can spend it as soon as possible to help the residents. Locked in. You know?
I think we all do.
And for a budget wise, right? Um, for planning purposes, because these other things, I mean, it's like. It's kind of an environmental impact fund. Like if you could rank these, the ones we can count on the most that we're gonna get X number of dollars, like is that how we're gonna plan this financially and operationally? It just seems almost like. Do we need a consultant? You know, like there are companies that advise you on how to get the best phone plan? I mean, I just wonder with our staff. Is this the best way to do this?
Would you like to respond?
Sure. Well, when I, when I. Learn about L S L and different things, you know, coming up on the horizon, because I think it's fair to say that, um, myself and Leanne, like we, we just. Continue to participate and to learn because this is happening for everybody at the same time. So a lot of the known. A lot of the knowns that you would like to have at this time aren't available. So what we try to do is we lean into what we do know. So I start from the perspective that the EPA has a regulation that's mandating. We would like to replace lead service lines, but they're mandating that we do this.
And that's a twenty seven to thirty, twenty twenty seven to thirty seven, we think. We don't even know that yet, do we?
So that's one of the things that we're working on with that utility finance plan with City Water is to say, okay. Financially, how does that look? Um, and based upon the limited guidance that we have received from the state and the EPA. We think that we may qualify, um, to do this project over a period of time longer than ten years. Um, but we need to talk with them and go through that conversation. We haven't seen an application or a process for filing. Cause I don't think it's been created yet. Um, but we wanna talk that through. But I, I, what I'm trying to do here from the villages end is take a look at. We know that the project, there's estimated costs. What's on the horizon? What could we tap into for purposes of financing? Um, the project and out of those options, how do we set us up for success? Because to your point, we don't have staff. To deploy a project like this. Um, so we also continue to explore what are alternative ways to do that. And one that presented itself, um, which is what the motion is tied to tonight, um, is utilizing an EPA model called C B P three. And for purposes of tonight, you know, cause I, I appreciate that for trustees of this board and future boards. This is a heavy issue, right? I mean, we've never, no one has ever had to deal with something like this, much less this dollar magnitude, right? So this is just to kind of put some of those funding or financing opportunities in buckets. So we can kind of see what, what the playing field is. And I am the lucky person who gets to go on the journey with you. And as we learn more, continue to peel the onion. As a lack of, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna start the process together. Um, that's one of the reasons why I was happy we had time to kind of go through these together as a group. Digest them a little bit from, uh, and just an operational standpoint right now to secure one of those being available to you later on. We'd recommend that you go through issuance of an R F Q for purposes of, of seeing who, um, submits, um, to the village. And because we have to back into all of these timelines.
What's. Who and Lee?
I would create.
City Water?
I would create the R F Q and we would release it, um, to anyone who would be willing to submit on it. So pretty much what it would be is me putting together that, those documentation, getting it out there. So people know that we have an R F Q, um, that we're seeking responses to.
I guess my other question, the Wassa is a lot bigger. Eight thousand lines, we've got twenty three. We don't have the staff. Does it make sense for us to try to use this?
I think what, what I'm suggesting for purposes of tonight's action is that we issue the R F Q. So that as we continue to learn more, we work with the financing plan that gets developed. We see, we don't preclude that from being an option for us.
Is there anyone that we have, will City Water help all with?
Well, um, Wassa did provide us with their R F Q and the process that they used because they also had to review it in conjunction with EPA. Requirements to make sure it was reflective of the model that, um, they'd been using and also so that it would qualify, right? Later down the line. So we have a model to look at. We've spent some time speaking with, um. Members, the mayor of, for Wassa as well as members of Wassa staff. Um, and getting, you know, the lay of the land in terms of what they've been doing to facilitate that, this type of a partnership. But pretty much for tonight, it's, it's this board saying to me. Yes, go ahead, release that R F Q and we'll release that and we're gonna continue to do our work in review and education on the other areas.
Doesn't bind us to.
No.
It does not. No.
It just has the opportunity open for you.
Exactly. Because one, the way that I organize it in my mind is that the earmark is sort of free money for us and our community. And so we can spend that however, you know, we want. The other two sources that were present, that were laid out, those are both federal programs. That we may or may not qualify for. We have to write grants for them and the earmark, we have to do paperwork as well. But what the C B P three offers is basically a mechanism to get that subsidy. You know, somebody to write the grants, to monitor those, to get the best price on things because they're working in many communities. And bring that all back to us. So. Either way, the subsidy is out there and either way, it needs to be, it's gonna be available for five years. And so the, the more that we can do in five years, the more subsidy we get from the current federal funding that's available. Trustee Kudo?
About the five year funding, which piece? Is that the, the Congressman Moore piece, five year?
No, um, that would be the.
Oh, the bipartisan.
Yeah, yeah, under the bill.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
Uh, I moved to direct staff to issue an R F Q to solicit firms that can provide the EPA C P B, C B P three. Delivery model for L S L implementation.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you have been directed to release an RFQ. Thank you very much. Um, so that concludes new business. Moving on to reports of village officials, the ICC meeting um is linked in our packet. The NSD board meeting is also linked in the packet. I would like to congratulate um Clerk Harold for her upcoming transition and thank you for all your service. I do believe this is your last village board meeting. And I think it's a great opportunity and a loss for us. Um, but we gained so much while you were here and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any reports of village trustees? Yes.
I have two things uh related to the Parks and Public Spaces Committee. I'm the liaison. Uh, first of all, I hope you all got your postcard about an engagement meeting on Thursday, April fourth from five to six thirty in the lower level of Village Center. Uh, we're updating the um Parks and Public Spaces Committee is working on updating the bike and pedestrian bicycle master plan. And uh, I would like to see, we'd like to beat the historical historic preservation response rate, but the bar is really high. But anyway, we're going to aim high. Uh, so I want everybody to participate in that. And also I'd like to let people know about, you may have heard, I believe, perhaps um at the bid, you heard about the Shorewood Longevity Project was, which is an initiative started by some village residents. And it's modeled after similar programs in, I believe, Finland, the Netherlands and Costa Rica. And it's about making Shorewood a great place to get old. And it talks about um building community connections. Uh, if you go, they do have a website already. They got a grant from the Shorewood Foundation to provide, I believe, public relations material. And it talks about, it's not just about making it a great place to grow old, but also building relations, relationships in the community of all ages. It's an intergenerational thing, really. And it's not just about, let's say, uh, a business that offers services to people who may be getting older and needing more things like that. Um, but it's also looking for a way to connect people of all ages, um, much to the point that Sue Bronson mentioned. Um, that uh, you know, being with people of all generations is good for everyone. And so I encourage everyone to Google um Shorewood Longevity Project and check it out. And they're looking for, um, obviously the Parks and Public Spaces Committee is willing to be a, an unofficial partner. Uh, and to um help spread the word about this initiative. It's, it's sort of an open-ended thing. It's not like there's going to be a deliverable or anything. But and, you know, over the time, it could morph into different things, but I think it's just seen as steps toward a continual goal.
Right. Um, speaking of update on open spaces, um, I, Rebecca and I received a letter from uh, I believe they're sisters, age eleven and nine, um, sharing concerns about crossing Shorewood Boulevard and Oakland Avenue at that intersection um to visit their grandma. And they would like us to look for solutions to um improve that, that experience for them. So I will, if we could add it to the record, um, under president reports and we'll get it. Put it in our, in our data.
Is that, is that the same intersection?
Yeah. All right, other trustees? I'll say thank you to the Women's Club or the Leave Women's voters and the Women's Club for hosting the forum last week. It was well attended. Trustee Lynn?
If you have an item of consideration, but we can.
Okay. Uh, village manager reports? All right, items for future consideration.
Okay, thank you. So um I, this comes to us through a neighbor of mine and um something I've talked to uh Director Gep truck with a little bit. Um, but the, the ask is basically if the village is able to amend the village code regarding parking for residential homes, street parking, to allow for people to purchase, for some reason, we'll fee it a short-term temporary permit to keep something that isn't a car on the street.
So. Eh, a boat.
Basically a boat. This is really about boats and campers. Um, so um, you know, the ask is right now, you can get a permit and have a construction bin outside of your house for really an ex, very extended period of time. Is there an appetite to allow for a much shorter term, one week at a time, two weeks at a time maximum? Something that would um you know, fill a space and, you know, but the resident would pay for it. Get that permit and go there.
To expand that.
There's really nothing like that, that we could find in other similar communities. For the most part, it's pretty much just not allowed or if it is, or you know, best case scenario, sometimes the police let it go for a week and then start knocking on your door. But that's basically the ask. And I don't even know if that's something that anybody would be interested in. But if we, if there is interest, you know, we could research it a little bit further at a committee and just see if there's a type of policy that would work like that. Doesn't know we have any initial questions.
So if there is an appetite, it sounds like community and business relations or public safety.
I mean, we're happy to take it, a community business with it. I don't know that I have much of an appetite for it. But certainly happy to look into it and take.
If it did go, it would go on our list at the bottom and work its way up.
It'd have to work its way through it. You know, and I mean, I think it's it's one of those things where it, it really only affects the very few people that it affects. You know, but I, I think uh it's worth maybe exploring if that's even a possibility in terms of the code, or if there's really just if it's too complicated because, uh, you know, I understand that like not every boat is the same size, not every camper is the same size. It would have to be really strict rules. It would have to be a short time period. It would, you know, all of that. So, yeah.
Point of order. I mean, I think we probably should just see if there's a, a will of the board to put it on the list. Um, and rather than getting into what the content of the policy could be respectfully. So if you'd like to make a motion?
Um, I, I move to, to take this proposal um for a temporary non-vehicle permit to uh Community Business Relations Possibly Committee.
We've wrapped up chickens, so there's, we, we have bandwidth.
You can, you can handle pretty much anything.
We have bandwidth now.
At this point, yeah. For further discussion?
At a time when.
At, at a time when, when it's possible.
Is there second?
I would second it, but I would, I would make a friendly motion because if it's an RV, it would be a V.
That, yeah, and maybe that is allowed. I.
Yeah.
I'll second, as is.
Um, okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries uh six-one to be on the list of future initiatives.
Thank you for taking this up.
Come. Any other items for future consideration or future items for consideration? All right, hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Oh.
To adjourn to close session.
Well, of course, that's what I meant. Um, so would somebody read the uh motion, please?
I can do that. I move to adjourn and to close session pursuant to nineteen point eight-five-one C to discuss the annual performance evaluation of the village manager.
Second.
All right, this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Morbaldoff?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Last roll call vote, aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
President McCag?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
For, for those people who are still on the call, we're actually going to end the, the team's meeting now. The only action that will be taken following closed session is to adjourn the meeting. Just didn't want anyone hanging out.